How many hours a week?
I'm approximately ten to twelve hours a week.
How many is Megan doing?
I believe fourteen.
Anybody else need to speak on the agenda items?
I just wanted to know, can I please have an extra agenda? Do you have an extra one that I could see? Thank you.
Okay, moving on, the first ones we're gonna start with is public safety, Carol.
Just a brief background, and I see that this project is represented by Wally Noddy. This project started in two thousand and four. This would be the fourth time that an application has been submitted to put in sidewalks for Reinhardt Village into the borough. Now, Mr. Kiefer from the foundation, and Mr. Popco is the engineer, do you want to go on with that?
Well, what I'd like to do is just answering questions that I can for the council. And our request is that the Claring Borough make application to Pendot for the project that we've been talking about. It's called the Greenville Avenue Pedestrian Safety Program. The main goal of the program is to get a sidewalk built along that stretch of Greenville Avenue in order to protect pedestrians that walk along that area. Right now, there's no sidewalks, starting just below Corbett Street and then to Hydrick. So there's a big gap in there, and then from Hydrick to the borough line is what would be being constructed. And of course, there's, as you know, a lot of pedestrian flow in that area. And of course, since there's not a designated sidewalk, people walk wherever, and there's paths on both sides of the road, and you may see students on both sides of the road, or other people walking on both sides of the road. What we really want to do is to build the sidewalk that would be there to enable people to walk more safely.
When we met as a committee, we don't want this to be a south street. So we asked Mr. Popco if he would actually go visit or revisit all the potential property owners. And I see you did.
We did that. If you'd like to do that, that's fine. There was a, the sidewalk, actually, if you go from Reinhardt Village back towards the borough, it's the Faust property, Richard and Kelly Faust, they were opposed to the project. The next project is Al Kennedy, he was opposed to the project. The next property would be Chingle Deckers, they do not oppose the project. And of course, you cross the street there, Hydrick Street, and it becomes a Richard and Sharon Markham. They're opposed to the project. And then it's Claring University Foundation, they strongly support the project. Christian and Missionary Alliance Church, they strongly support the project. And then it would be Claring University, and they strongly support the project.
Why do some of the homeowners object? What are some of their objections?
Their main objection is maintenance, winter maintenance. That's the main problem with them having a sidewalk in front of their home. Of course, and, you know, they know also that with that, you know, they would have the responsibility of maintaining the sidewalk.
What about the cost of the project?
The project would be a borough project, and as we've said in the past, the Claring University Foundation intends to pay the cost of the project.
So what would the cost to the taxpayers be?
Zero.
So this would go on both sides, then?
Well, no, it would be on the east side, which would be the side where the Claring University property is, down to Hydrick Street. And then at Hydrick Street, you would cross Greenville Avenue.
Would there be a crosswalk then?
Yes, there would be a crosswalk there, Greenville Avenue, or Hydrick Street. And then you would proceed on the west side of the road up to Reinhardt Village.
Can you explain why that had to be so people understood?
Yeah, there's an Arch Culver that crosses Greenville Avenue at that point at Hydrick Street. The stream Trout Run runs underneath Greenville Avenue. The bridges, I'm sorry, the Arch Culver is in much better condition on the east side of the road, and there's much more room there than it is on the west side of the road. On the west side of the road, there's been a lot of deterioration. And Pendot's temporarily maintaining that with some gideon baskets. It doesn't allow for enough room. And also, it's a very high embankment at that point.
The traffic coming in, of course, would still be the same, but I would think with Owens Illinois closed, there's not as much turning out of that street anymore, and that's right where the crosswalk would go, correct?
The crosswalk would be, the crosswalk would be on the town side of that Hydrick Street. So you would cross Trout Run and then immediately cross, I have a map if you'd like to look at it.
Oh, I just, I was just trying to get it.
No, yeah, no, that's good.
But I was thinking ahead, like, if this is approved, you know, then to focus on pedestrian safety there, I was just thinking ahead of what the police department, you know, could do in order to get that going once it's installed, I mean, if it is installed.
Yeah, the crosswalk would be on the town side. So most of the traffic that comes out of that, even, you know, the potential users of those properties would more than likely have most of the traffic going towards the interstate.
The interstate, yeah.
And I've provided you with a package of information. I hope that gives you an idea. And all of the photos that were taken there were taken at random. We didn't plan to take photos the days we were there, just, you know, decided, well, we'll take some photos. And one of the big concerns originally that Pendot had was truck traffic turning out and heading towards the interstate. There wouldn't be enough room there, and what you can see in the photos is there's ample room there for a very large extended chassis truck to be able to entrance onto Greenville Avenue and head towards Interstate eight.
I support the fact that this is a very dangerous situation. But I also told you my concern about imposing the sidewalks and the maintenance and the care of those. That's my, you know, where you're putting that. I don't vote on rainwater coming down there three years, four years, and once it's a bruise and you have to replace your sidewalk. Now, Mr. Kiefer, is there anything that we could do as a bargaining chip for our residents?
Really not at this time. I mean, we have come forth, Carol, you and I, when you were manager, we started working this eight years ago, and sought out every funding source available to us to help pay for the sidewalk. And we're frankly unsuccessful because of the parameters of the funding that was and is available. So with that in mind, the foundation has stepped up and, as again, agreed to pay for the entire project. We paid for the engineering to get us this far, and I pledged to pay for the project itself. And that is a very large number.
Yes.
And so for us to commit to continuing to take care of those at this time, we just don't feel as though we can do that. And it's just at the point where we seem to be in, you know, it's a pretty good thing right now. I'm sorry, we just can't commit to that in the future.
How successful do you think? I mean, this is, after I sat through all those seminars and found out it was an ineligible project. I know you sat through one where Pendot said definitely they would not do this. How successful do you think we would be?
Well, I've been encouraged by Pendot. The conversations we've had with Pendot. We met with their district maintenance manager, the county maintenance manager, and then the district town maintenance manager. And of course, we've had discussions with the permitting office in Indiana. And as a matter of fact, the last two conversations I've had with them were very encouraging. I would like to point out, too, one of the questions came up about, you know, the borough residence there. Of course, this would be built within the compliance of the fifty-foot wide street. And of course, it's a little bit wider though, at Trout Run, it's seventy feet wide there. So it wouldn't be on borough residence property, it would be within the area known as Greenville Avenue. And I apologize, I did have another package of information to you last night, I'll make sure you all get it. It's the language that was written by Borough Council in nineteen forty-eight in order to make Greenville Avenue a street and widen it at that point and allow the automobile traffic and also pedestrian traffic to have a place when the street got widened.
Carol, I mean, we do appreciate the burden that we put on landowners because we have that burden as well.
Right.
But we keep coming back to, at least at this point, it's gotta be about safety.
Yes, right.
It's been way too long, and, you know, we can't do everything for everyone, but we're sure trying to do our best to try and get through the initial applications and get the project done.
But I would be remiss if I didn't bring you that up.
Sure.
Ron, can you just explain the south part of Trout Run, from Trout Run to Reinhardt Village's, that section where it crosses over? Was there any efforts made to keep the entire project going on the left-hand side of the street? Maybe have the crosswalk up at the entrance?
Yeah, there's not enough site distance. One of the key components of having safety is site distance when people are out onto the paved part of the road. And when you move it down there to Hydrick Street, it does two things. It puts it at a crossing street, which is normally where you have a crosswalk. And the second thing it does, it increases the site distance tremendously. I mean, you know, there are people who speed in that area. I mean, there's a lot of efforts being taken to keep the speed down in that area, but it allows for even increased speeds, and you still have enough safe stop in the distance.
And it just looks like the picture I'm looking at, there's some type of wall reinforcement or something with some of those properties, is that right?
Well, the, right now, the only place you would ever see the possible wall would be at the very last property before you get to Reinhardt Village. You know, that direction where there's the embankment right there. And the house is actually very close to the street.
Right.
We have in the plans that we've submitted, and Pendot didn't have any concerns with that part of it, a two-to-three-foot wall, which would be this high.
Right.
But that's just proposed because if the rock and the soil there is able to naturally repose down to the sidewalk, then we would like to keep it as low as possible. So it could be anywhere from six inches to three feet, but that's the proposal.
But that would all be entailed in that scope of the project if a wall needed to happen?
Correct.
Is that outside of the borough, then? That's in Claring Township?
No. Everything that would be done as part of this project with the borough as the applicant is within the borough itself.
So is there anything that needs to be done from the township side?
Yeah, Reinhardt Village, once this is approved within the borough, then they'll approve Reinhardt Village's application. They've been making applications concurrent with the borough's application.
Does the township have any?
My conversation with you, about the light. And I know for the last ten years, Pendot has it, I wanted it at Corbett Street with Owens. Now, but there's still a lot of traffic. The only area you can get out of on there is at Corbett either way, the others are, the other streets just don't do it. So, but I haven't got that light. And I know you don't have money, but I'm gonna tell you again, I'd even settle for a light now. Maybe we need it down where you're gonna put the crosswalk, but I'd even settle for a blinking light because traffic comes like a bed out of hell, as I would put, either going in town or out of town. And I know that the police department has many stops down that way in checking. And now that you're gonna have them crossed right down there, I mean, when they pull out of Reinhardt and get started, by the time you're up at Corbett Street, they've got pretty good speed going. And that's where you have the, a big line of traffic at any one time, but anybody coming in and out. So again, I'm looking, like I said, I'd settle for a light there, at least they gotta slow down and then start again to go up. It's a bad, that's a bad area. And I know when Reinhardt Village was within, I don't think, maybe you did, mine would be a lot of thinking of how that would impact the traffic going.
Actually, we requested lights on both sides, both of Bauer Road and Greenville Avenue. And after the traffic studies were completed, we were nowhere close to the required number of vehicles to have lights. So we attempted that when we opened.
Right, now, okay, I didn't, but still, like I said, mine is still for that. I mean, we had Pendot piece of coming from Indiana, wherever they're located, and I'm sure they really, that's always my biggest complaint, they don't even know where Claring is. We probably gotta get down and pick them up to show them what we're talking about and where we are.
Does the township have any problems from the other side up? I mean, are they totally for it?
Well, because it's, individual landowners can request a permit application through Pendot.
Okay.
So, you know, if any one of the landowners in any other area along Greenville Avenue would like to have a sidewalk, whether it's in the borough or in Claring Township, they would just have to make an application and follow the design guidelines that Pendot has, and they'd be able to install a sidewalk also.
Okay, any other questions? Do you have a motion to?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
To submit this application? Do I have a second on that? Any more discussion from the council members?
Well, I think like Carol said, you have to put it out there because this is putting a burden on the, on the paying taxpayer that I think it's keeping us at a safety, it's all about safety.
You can't put a price on a light, I mean, the sidewalk, the light.
You know, in that meeting that we had earlier with Pendot, I kept stressing the safety and the safety of the people walking there. And to me, that's probably the most important thing we're talking about here, see?
And everybody, and he did this in every property owner, so everybody is fully aware.
I don't like it that they're fully aware.
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Ron, and thank you, Mr. Kiefer.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. For the fourth time.
Fourth truck.
So then would you throw in that application or?
Twenty-three.
As far as the, okay. I didn't know the borough had to reply.
On behalf of the borough.
Okay, I'd like a motion to approve the appropriations for the month of March, it's in your packet.
I do, too, I heard my proposition for March of March is in the packet, if you see.
Right, second on that motion? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
She carries. Okay, the next one, permission for Todd to draw down the CDGB funds for Susan Smith and the zoning ordinance. It's in your packet?
Yes.
Carol? Do I have a motion to do that?
I would say move.
Do I have a second on that? Second, you assume so. Any discussion on that?
Yes, just real quick, Jamie, when you came in the other day, was Susan planning? I mean, have you decided when that meeting will be?
I just talked to Bob before today, and they're still coordinating that with her.
Okay, if there's anything that I can do to get it, you know, the party's downtown?
We just, well, just tell them it's very important for them to show up. We're gonna make it after five o'clock.
Okay.
On a day when the west is torrential flow, so they will have an excuse not to come.
Sure, but if there's an email that you wanna send to me, I can send it out to, you know, just send it there where, and call calls or whatever.
Absolutely.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The treasures report is in your packet, the budget annual list is also in your packet. The next quarter of business we come to is the labor women's voter of Claring County, the Vander, request to hang two banners.
I'm gonna get that request from the labor women's voter to be approved.
Second on that. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. The next one is VFW's special event request for Memorial Day service held on May twenty-eighth.
I knew the request for the VFW's.
I have a second on that motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the next one is need a motion to adopt Resolution twenty-twelve three-three-five. It's a resolution designating open records officers and policies. I'll make a motion. Do I have a second on that motion? Any discussion on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the next one is to adopt Resolution twenty-twelve three-three-six. It's the resolution of disposing records in accordance with the municipal record manual. I have a motion on that.
Make that motion as stated in.
Do I have a second? Any discussion?
On this resolution, just the point of all of us, Mark E. Hall, borough secretary, should that not be acting secretary?
I can change that. Okay, we're sorry.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the next one is permission for Todd to attend the twenty-twelve Pennsylvania Community Development and Housing Conference. And as we discussed, anybody that we approved to go to a conference, they will come back to the next council meeting and give us a report of what you did. Do I have a motion to approve that?
I make a motion.
Do I have a second on that? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the next one is the report on the Eads Group retainer service for the borough engineering of Claring Pole. Do I have a motion to accept that?
I make a motion to point the Eads Group.
Okay, do I have a second on that?
I'll second that.
Any discussion on that? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next one is the Robert Rules of Order discussion.
Again, I'd like to say that since we've had so many issues and discussion around how the meetings are being run and whose rules govern how we run the meeting, that is why I brought forth that we adopt, since we were told that we don't have any rules, we have not adopted any rules. That is why I brought forth the issue of adopting Robert's Rules of Order, by which we would run Claring Borough Council meetings.
Is that a motion?
Well, I tabled the motion that I made last year. I'd like to take that off the table and untable it and put it back on the table.
Okay, do I have a second on that? Okay, discussion?
Yeah, when you talk to Robert's Rules of Order, you talk in the whole book, eight hundred and one pages?
The Robert's Rules of Order, the general rules of order. I'm not talking, I gave you some.
You gave us all some.
Synopsis and some snippets out of it. Yes, we would run the meeting by Robert's Rules of Order. I have one, Jamie had one last time. They are, you know, yes, Robert's Rules of Order as they're published.
I would just make one comment, if you're going to adopt that, there would only seem to be one exception, and that would be for compliance with the sunshine law. It's my understanding, Robert's Rules of Orders don't provide for public comment at the beginning of the meeting and that type of stuff, and that the sunshine act would control just those. So other than that, that's the only thing.
I have a question. Tom and Rotary, do you all follow Robert's Rules when you have your meeting? Mr. Kiefer, when you have meetings of the Claring University Board and the Sealing and Foundation, do you all follow some form of order?
It would be a modified. Can I say that we followed the entire book? I can, too.
Well, of course, I, but I mean, it's, you do try and follow the structure.
We're attempting to follow the structure.
To maintain an organized meeting.
I believe in one of the pieces, in one of the synopsis that I gave you last time, there was a comment in there about the Congress of the United States of America follows Robert's Rules of Order.
Well, the other one, too, is Janice Horns here from the Women of Voters. Do you all follow?
We follow the basic Robert's Rules.
Basic, it says.
Well, I like what Brenda, I'm not a Robert's Rules of Order expert, but I like what she presented with the motions. It was education. I have no problem doing this, but I don't know about, what would we get into? Can you explain to me a little more what she said about there's no public comment allowed?
Well, my understanding is Robert's Rules of Order, or any Rules of Order specify how the meetings can be conducted in motions, and somebody's supposed to acknowledge you and everything else. And it's my understanding that the sunshine act provides that you have to provide a period of public comment on any issue, not just agenda items and stuff. And Robert's Rules of Order doesn't address that particular issue. So other than that, whatever you guys want to do is fine.
The only comment is, I did call as many townships as I possibly could, and as they stated, none of them runs by the full Robert Rules of Order. They run by, as we can all say, some type of creative Robert rules or some type of meeting, but none of them follows the book verbatim. The boroughs that's in the county, none of them follows the book verbatim. I just, as I called around, I just wanted to see what our neighbors in the area was doing, and this is what I came up. They all have some type of, you know, they use parts of it. You know, I'm involved in organizations, and we use parts of it. Verbatim, I, they don't do that. I'm just throwing that out as information because I did call as many as I possibly could in the area.
I don't know if you asked the question, but have they adopted Robert's Rules of Order as their way of doing things? Even if they use them all out by version, they just do it without having it as a requirement? And what would the penalty be if we adopt Robert's Rules of Order and we find ourselves out of order with it? What's the next question?
What are your questions?
What is my concern is that since January, we've had so many disruptions and, no, you're not using those rules, no, you're not using anybody's rules. Whose rules are we using? What are we doing? And the rules change as we progress through a meeting. So that is my reason for bringing forth a standard set of rules.
May I ask a question to Ms. Horn? When you had come to the first meeting, you mentioned about the parliamentarian. Have you ever found yourselves out of order in the wake of Women Voters?
Yeah.
Who catches you?
The parliamentarian.
Okay.
Is there some way, I don't know how that probably is way off the wall, I'm always trying to think of them all. But I liked this guideline that she gave us. Is there any way we can adopt these as guidelines?
My one suggestion, and again, this is just throwing out ideas.
I like this.
But, you know, some of the organizations that it belongs to, we have our own bylaws and our own rules that we agreed to follow and go by. Would it be advantageous to have a committee to look at creating a bylaws or a, you know, a form of order that we can run with and all accept? You know, it's not pushing anything down anybody's throats. We all agree that these, we can follow these rules and accept them and go that way. So I was kind of hoping that maybe we could form a committee and go through and say, look, here's the stuff that we can do and we can run this meeting efficiently. I like, you know, like Carol said, some of the sheets are very good, but, you know, I'm just throwing out ideas.
And my only comment is, Brenda, I don't wanna speak for you, but I think the end goal is to run an efficient meeting.
Run an efficient meeting, and just if you'll allow me, we have many more serious things to think about rather than reinventing the wheel. And what you're suggesting is that we reinvent the wheel.
Carol, is there be some way that, I mean, I don't know if this is done by ordinance or, I'm just, you know, bylaws in the boroughage, how it could be ordered as far as using, you know, the basic Robert's Rules or if they're, you know, however it's written, so we're not cleaning ourselves if we.
Yeah, I mean, basically, it's wide open for, you know, you can adopt, it doesn't need to be done by ordinance, it can be done by resolution.
Resolution.
And it can be changed at any time, as long as everybody agrees. And it can be changed at any time, as long as everybody agrees. I was looking in the handbook for Borough Council members, and they listed just a small version of Robert's Rules of Order. But that's entirely up to you guys, what you want to adopt and what parts you like and what parts you don't want to adopt at all.
I also looked in the Borough Handbook, and one of the statements in there was, they, to adopt the whole book, they find it very difficult for boroughs to run an efficient meeting, to adopt what they kind of do in their little handout book that, when I went to Borough School, that's what they recommend. I mean, so I, there's something out there. The Borough Handbook already has this, you know, and I have a Borough Handbook and what they, you know, suggest to run a meeting and what to do. So I'm just throwing out ideas. I, you know, I did look into as much of this as I possibly could. Okay, with no other further discussion?
Just one more thing. If it would be possible to say, let's say that the adoption doesn't take place now, but this is something that they're working towards. Could we put someone in the position of maybe serving as parliamentarian from council? Or myself, or I don't know if that's crossing over, I don't know.
I think the first thing probably would be to adopt some type of order first.
Sure, but I'm just saying if we go down this road, just to make certain that we're following it, just because you adopt it doesn't mean, you know. So if there was some way, yeah, someone just, you know.
So how do you adopt part of it, not the whole thing, I guess?
Because you use it as the guide, not the.
I mean, it can help you just how it's worded, too.
My understanding, I always thought of any, any book or anything, you use it as a guide. The only book that I was taught to never use as a guide is the Bible. Anything else, anything else, it can be used as a guide, except for the Bible. And that's why I believe, and going that way, I would support it as a guide, no way, well, you don't have to get page by page and line by line.
Can I make a motion?
I guess what I was already. Is to adopt Robert's Rules of Order, but then maybe have a committee come up with some basic motions that we improve themselves over time.
Okay, I was going to make a motion to.
There's a motion on the table right now.
Oh, is there? I'm sorry.
Well, that's okay.
I sort of appointed a motion to appoint Brenda as a part. She's the most knowledgeable on this whole thing.
Well, no, the motion that's on the table now is one that was tabled and is now on the table and is back on the table. And that, of course, is adopting the rules, and then, of course, you sneak in that in on the discussion. That could be the next one.
Okay, so you need to vote on adopting Robert Rules of Order as the full-blown eight hundred and some page book.
That wasn't what she said.
But I have the whole thing, not, not bits and pieces.
You're adopting Robert's Rules of Order as a guide. As a guide to run our meetings. As a guide in there, I think.
So let me restate it. I move that we adopt Robert's Rules of Order as a guide by which to run Clarion Borough Council meeting.
Okay, do I have a second on that motion?
I have a second to the motion.
Okay. Any further discussions? Rule call or should I? I guess rule call.
It's just a word that's in there as a guide.
Yes, that's correct.
I can, I can vote yes on that.
She didn't call your name.
Sad violation. You're all kind of sitting there for five minutes. Well, I didn't know there was a motion. So Mr. Zirklo. Mr. Sensen.
Yes.
Dr. Sanders Dayday.
Yes.
Ms. Lepin.
Yes.
Mr. Nella.
Yes.
Mr. Gertle.
Yes.
President Walter.
Yes.
Okay.
I would like to make a motion that we obtain Dr. Brenda Sanders Dayday as our parliamentarian. Is that okay?
Do I have a second on that motion?
We can do that.
If we can do that.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on that?
Brenda, do you mind a burden?
I just have to read it.
Well, girl's not the guide.
It's easy, you can Google it.
I'll be your backup.
We can Google it now, it pops up.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. As of right now, we will not need our second council meeting in March, so our next one will be a. Okay, downtown committee report.
I do have that report. Andrea and I met with Tracy Beckman in early, in February. We talked about several things. The main thing is we're trying to set up a meeting with the business owners so that we can discuss a couple of things, like having an activity, one supporter with everybody downtown. The meetings we want to have in the evenings, we specifically discussed having something on March seventeenth, which is St. Patty's Day. We talked about decorating the park, and we also talked about moving into the summer, having some music activities in the park on Friday and Saturday. So that is the report that we have now, and we will be meeting again and bringing back our reports, hopefully, activities.
Thank you.
I agree. If I could just add to that real quick, we're going to try and reach out then to the other organizations, because originally this committee was kind of bringing everybody together and so, you know, Ray was doing and all that. So it's a beginning, and I thought it was really going to be a good idea.
Just one question, I'm getting feedback when we started back in January, citizens weren't being involved. We started that, is this part of that?
No. No. No, that one's a citizen advisory board. Not that they can't serve, but, I mean, they need volunteers.
Yeah, we're going to need volunteers. Well, of course, the wine walk is going to be made, I don't know, the first weekend after school, after the students' leave, after the university students' leave. And that's going to require everybody in town to be involved.
Sure.
And I think we may have ten wineries this time. I'm not quite sure, but the businesses will all be open on Friday night. Last year it wasn't until ten o'clock at night, and that was activity.
May eighteenth, I'm sorry.
Thank you, thank you. May eighteenth. And that was activity on Main Street in Clarion till way over, till midnight or so that night because of the activities, and now you don't see that.
Just one quick question. Can you give a plug on where people might take their.
For the wine walk? At the chamber office right now is the only place, yeah, that is the only place, but there will be more tickets available this year than we're available now.
Okay, thank you very much. Public Works Reporters.
First item is to adopt ordinance 2012-787, the amendment to the Borough Clarion General Employees Pension. This is the second reading of that. It's for the one, the last part, so I'm going to get these off.
Do I have a second on that motion?
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion?
This is the one we discussed at the last meeting?
Yes, right.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item is to approve the storm sore drain assembly quote submitted by Glen Reddy next, the amount of $4,930 in CTC plastic pipe quote submitted by Catalon Pipe and Supply Company in the amount of $645, and to pay the bill immediately so the final payment request can be submitted to EPA by March thirty-one, two twelve. I'll make the motion, and then if I get a second, I'll have Todd speak to that.
Do I have a second?
One second.
Okay, Todd?
We received numerous price quotes for these items, and this is the final procurement to be made under a grant given to the borough by EPA. And time is of the essence because the contract is coming to an end, and Janet Fleming is helping us close the grant out. And they need these materials from us, the procurement documentation and proof that these materials have actually procured before they can move on and submit the final pay request to EPA. So this, this has to be done by the end of the month, or we'll forfeit our reimbursement.
This is what we brought up last month to do, and now you did it, and what was left of that grant, and now we're asking to get the money and get it done. And we talked about it, Jason, that our public works need.
Okay, any other further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And permission for Tom Thompson and Chris Heinz to attend the 2012 Municipal Room Maintenance and Safety Symposium on May seventh and eighth, and the price is sixty-five each for the room, for initiation, Clarion, and then for the rooms. And this is money that we budgeted for in the, our regular public works budget for that our employees could go. And as you said, when they come back, they'll give us a report of what they seen, what they did, and so on.
Okay, do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The next item is I support the Public Works Committee of Jason and I, and then Tom, we met, and Tom and his staff gave us a list to advertise for the 2012 paving project, the Sealer Packet. This is the third year of the three-year, but we're going to do the roads to catch up. And then hopefully next year we can spend a whole lot less and can do it on a continuous basis. It's the Sealer Packet, and again, it was approved by me and Jason, or we're recommending for approval. And the only thing that will change on that is if the price comes in higher than what money we have to spend, and then our committee will go back and take away to meet what we have to spend. So what I would ask for council to approve, the paving, and we want to get it out early because of the, last year we were, had a pause in there for two weeks. We were right up to Autumn Week Festival and then had to come back in a two-week period and redo it. And with the price of everything going up, that early we get out, the lower price might be instead of going late to the gas and whatnot. It is a lot higher. So requesting that permission be granted, bids to be closed by March twenty-eighth at three P M. And at three oh one, the bids will be opened, and the winning bid will be approved at the April fourth council meeting.
Do I have a second on that motion? Jason? Any further discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The next item, permission to conduct the formal CDBG program modification to add the South Seventh Avenue curb ramp installation project to the two eleven CDBG program. Todd, again, do you want to talk about that?
This, this modification would be, if approved by council, would add the curb cut or curb ramps installation project to our two thousand and eleven CDBG program year. We would take, we're thinking approximately taking thirty-nine thousand dollars from the community parks improvement project over to this activity. And we're going to leave the community park improvements project and fund it at a thousand dollars if this goes through. This will allow us to install accessible curb ramps on South Seventh Avenue below South Street, but above Biker Street. There are a number of intersections in there that require curb ramps right now. This is going to be designed and built when it's bid out. It'll be subject to prevailing weed rates and everything else that has a regular Sealer project.
Any other discussion? Any, any discussion from here?
Regarding the ramps, I mean, this is dealing with handicap accessibility, making the sidewalks better. I mean, it's improvement, or I mean, where, where is this taking?
How can I say this? When we paved that street last year, and Tom, you can.
Okay. Anytime you pave a street, or you improve it to that level, you have to put in handicap curb cuts. They're removing barriers is what it's called.
Oh, okay, okay.
So that's an ongoing thing.
But it's an improvement. I mean, I realize we're taking it from someplace and putting it somewhere else, but this is, this is required.
This is required. As a paving project last year, it's required to do the curb cuts.
Any other discussion on that?
And just to clarify, this is not happening at South, the intersection of South Street and South Seventh?
It's already done.
That one's already done. It's below that, basically, those streets going down South Seventh.
George Ross, Frampton, Maranay, and Barbour.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
We didn't know.
Oh, we didn't? I thought we did. Sorry. We didn't make a motion. Oh, I thought we did. Okay, do I have a second on that motion?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Earl, you're still up.
The next one, it might not be one of the way we want to discuss, but possibly widening Sheridan Road. And I see, the gentleman, it has a series there, I see Tom Neller down there. What we're talking about is, and we've got complaints from people, when you out there, you drive down Sheridan to pull on into three twenty-two. When you make that right turn, they end up driving up over, it's that high sidewalk. I know, I do it all, I don't even go there no more because of. We need to, permission to, Pendot has to get, well, we thought we had it fixed last year, or it was going to be fixed. When Pendot was down the road, did the paving, they either go out further than what that was, and then they, they would take care of it with the borough, but they quit down by the dorms. And it's still a problem, turning, when you get there, turning left and going into town, you've got no problem. But you try turning right and do it, and still stay on your side of the road, a lot other drivers than I am. But you're way on the other side, and we can maybe do it. And we can maybe do it within-house or whatever, but first of all, we need, before we can even look at it and get, we need permission for a highway occupancy permit application from Pendott, again, we're back to Pendott. They got it through with Tom. Go ahead, you-
Okay, what it is, anytime you enter into a state highway, you have an occupancy permit. And it has stipulations, you have site plans, elevations, everything has to meet their guidelines, and it's quite extensive to get the permit, so that's why we discussed about getting ease to look at that and draw up a plan so we get the occupancy permit and move that along. It'd only be on the east side of Sheridan, the west side has a telephone pole there and you could costly, you can try to, but people move over to the left of Sheridan to make that right-hand turn, so then you block people trying to come into the street at the same time.
And before we can do anything, we have to have this permit from Pendott because we're going out on their highway.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, that's a motion.
Do I have a second on that motion? Any discussion?
I'd just like to hear from the two gentlemen here in the audience. Impacts, any, their thoughts on it?
It seemed to me a curb cut, you were cutting curbs everywhere else, and the curb's the problem. Why don't you just take the curb out of there?
You'd still have to get the block permit, you'd still have to get a permit.
Just take a curb out?
Anything, anytime you alter, anytime entrance into a state highway, and you have to, and you have to go through the walls.
I don't think you got a permit to put the curb in there because one of those sidewalks-
It's down in the rules.
But what you're saying is that it would not be on the west side, it'd be on the east side, that the widening would take place, if that were the case.
Really, mostly, not a whole lot of widening, it's to work on what they said to take the curb out. But we can't do anything to-